My delegation to the flyer, by the state's authority, to the great honor of this stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just. I'm trying to know what that word.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, call for meeting, Tuesday, May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Time is now seven oh six. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Media Act, chapter two thirty-one, public law, nineteen seventy-five, notice this meeting was published in December ninth, twenty twenty-one, issue of the Sun, Earl News, and Star Ledger. Bishop McPelly.
President.
Bishop Evans.
Here.
Bishop Patraco.
Here.
Bishop Scott Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
Old President Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very unique and more spacious occasion this evening. We will be swearing in our new mayor. But before we get to that, there's just a few things that I feel can tell us today. You know, whenever you assume a new position, there are nuances that you never anticipate. All right, so you need people around you and people with the knowledge and experience to help guide you. All right, until you find your way, and then once you find your way, you pretty much take it on your own. Soon to be Mayor Scott Kelly again, all right, has been an outstanding friend, an outstanding confidant. If I was to describe him, the words I would have to use are honest, utmost integrity, smart, all right, and dedicated to this town. You couldn't ask for a better public servant. So having said that, it's my extreme pleasure to read this resolution. It is resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, and State of New Jersey, that Joseph P. Scott Kelly, P. Scott Kelly, be appointed as Mayor of the Township of Nutley from May seventeen, twenty twenty-two, to May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. I proudly move this resolution.
Bishop McPelly.
I want to first say a piece of distinct honor and privilege of saying congratulations first, so congratulations, Mayor. Hi.
Bishop Evans.
I will too, open my congratulations. Maro Tu, as I said in the last meeting, for leadership, of order, to stand, to stand where nobody expects of this leadership. So thank you for the leadership. And Joe stepping in, and he will share with us his dedication.
Bishop Patraco.
I'd just like to thank Maro as well, did an outstanding job, say proud of you, oh, I bet you, my first community here. So proud of you, representing the town, so good under a lot of different circumstances, challenges, all that's creating, let's go on and on, that's always my friend. I'll look to you, Joe, I claim Joe Scott Kelly, for your guys, while while Texas, for all kind of, you all there, right? Into party, that's kind of, the public works, but I'll say the same thing, thinking of six years ago, I'm starting to start time. Not only welcome to happen, so. And I go now, I'm sorry.
Bishop Scott Kelly.
So thank you for your kind words, especially, Mayor. I'll say.
Mayor Tucci.
Right up into the end, these are last act. I'm again very proud of you, oh, I, the Township of Nutley, should rest easy. They are in outstanding hands this evening, and the next two years, we just continue to get better than that. I.
Before I start, let me just say, it's a distinct honor of mine, being in this position, to swear in someone who's not only a friend, but a confidant and a mentor to me, I want to graduate into this family. So let's take the oath of the Mayor of the Township of Nutley. I, Joseph P. Scott Kelly.
I, Joseph P. Scott Kelly.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will faithfully, that I will faithfully, impartially, impartially, and justly perform, and justly perform all the duties of the office, all the duties of the office of the Township Mayor, of the Township Mayor, in the County of Essex, the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Joseph P. Scott Kelly.
I, Joseph P. Scott Kelly.
Do further solemnly swear, do, so, further solemnly swear.
At least solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear truth faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
The United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
One, two, three.
Can you get a picture with all the positions?
One, two, three. One more. Perfect.
And with my DPDW family, can you come on up?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye. Thank you, to fill up this by. Get the wine out of there.
Yeah, I didn't say. Closer, closer. Close. Gotta squeeze a little bit on each other. How they came in.
Hold on, I should go.
One, two, three. One more. Perfect.
Thank you, everybody. One of the matters of the setting is, I have just one message here. It says, Mayor Scott Kelly, the class will profess to you, so. Before we move on with the rest of the agenda, there's a couple of words I'd like to say. First of all, welcome everyone, to my fellows, the Commissioners, thank you for your support. Maro Tucci, thank you for sponsoring this resolution tonight, and for your friendship, not only these past two years, but throughout my tenure on the sport. Two years ago, within five minutes of the county clerk first posting the results, Maro and I talked, we agreed, split four-year mayor role term. Take it two years apiece. We worked as a team these past two years, and we will continue to work as a team the next two years. When you talk to people outside of Nutley, they always ask, why would you guys split the mayorship? It's almost foreign to them, that two people will put ego aside and do what's best for the town. But that's what we do, though. That's what this Board of Commissioners do every day. We may not always agree on the details, but we always put what's best for Nutley into every decision we make. As Maro laid out at the last meeting, the issues we have faced have been unprecedented. Coronavirus pandemic, storms, Isaiah's, and Iowa, protests on the street, the rescue squad demise of the sorcery to public safety, the on three development issues, the Chickilee building class, and the pool club litigation. Mayor, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your graciousness, thank you for your class. The last time I had the honor of taking this gown, which is right here, Bishop Patraco gave me a special moment by passing the gown to my dad, who sent it. That picture sits on the floor over my desk. As Maro was also failing, this friends a close second to that day, six years ago. Thank you again, Mayor. My wife Sue moves down the court, my son Sal, who's the hardest working employee we have at Nutley, and the best son you can ask for. My two girls, Arielle and Gianna, who always support me. My son was Nick and Kevin, my gift grandchildren, Kira, Kevin, Nicholas. Nicholas represents the seventh generation of my family, born up in her home. And that man was a bona fide hero. During Hurricane Ida, he rescued a man that was certainly swept away by the ravaging third river. A moment he nor that man will ever forget. I love you and I'm proud of you. Thank you all for your love and support. Who out of the general temple, I don't know what to call, judge, honor, your highest, but I'm proud that I always called my friend. Thank you for swearing me in, welcome back. I miss seeing you every day.
Miss you guys.
He did a wonderful job as our township attorney, he's doing a great job as our judge, has left us some capable hands of Jonathan Crew. My only regret for the last two years is missing out on returning the favor and swearing him in as our judge. To the men and women of the DPDW department, make me look good every day. Thank you for coming out tonight, it's much appreciated. I would especially like to thank my leadership team, Mike, Nico, Sal, Zit, those of Thomas, Anthony, and Lisa. Job is about to get a little bit bigger. Special thanks to my guardian angels, I know you're all in this room today. My brother Mike, my grandmother, and my uncle Robert, but especially my grandfather, who sat in that first row for twenty years, my dad, who sat over here for twenty years, and Kevin Martin, served our township as our township attorney, who sat next to me. Even though I know you are, you are with and around me every day, Bishop Wall. But no matter the problem, circumstance, there remains much work to do and challenges to meet. We still struggle with COVID and its variants, on three has the potential and will transform our town to the next generation. All five of the big buildings left, the Roach Department, have been built. I saw I now join the Hackensack Perineum School of Medicine, Monomeda, Hackensack Perineum Center for Discovery Innovation, YMAC, and Ralph Farrel. We now have a vibrant campus and a premier innovation hub that is school and rural economy, producing quality jobs for our residents, and increasing our productivity balance, and there is more to come. We will not be bullied by deep-pocketed developers into bringing to short-term gains that result in long-term costs and adverse consequences for our township. Thanks to Mayor Tucci, we have seven volunteers, who have put aside multiple lawsuits and will hopefully result in much needed fifty-five year old luxury housing. Very soon, we will have agreement on splitting and redevelopment from the Chickilee site that will preserve parking and beautiful open space, and revitalize tractable. I am very excited for our future. Thank you for the honor and privilege to serve as your mayor, as we continue to move our township forward. Thank you again. Let's move on to agenda items. Let's, uh, let's move to the proclamation. The proclamation for Doug Eater tonight, Doug, come on up. Pretty warm, right there, it's good. Doug really excited, the whole township, playing in the NCAA. Took St. Peters pretty far, and was excited to watch him put Nutley on the map. I didn't match, they said Nutley so many times, and I don't think everyone, anyone made it back to page of the Daily News or the Post. Mark and May made the front page, not for good things. It's an exciting thing, so Doug, let me read this proclamation. Whereas Douglas Ryan Eater, a lifelong resident of Nutley, was born March fifth, two thousand, to Allison Way Eater. And whereas Doug attended Washington School, who was a tremendous athlete, playing for local Nutley Recreation Travel Basketball Program in the township, always demonstrating both camaraderie and school spirit. And whereas Douglas moved on to Bourbon County High School, where he played four years of varsity basketball, and ended his career with a thousand seventeen career points. He served as team captain in two thousand nineteen as a senior, leading the team to the Bourbon County Championship title, state championship title, in the NJSI NCAA Voice Basketball Tournament Champions Final. And whereas Douglas's college basketball career began at St. Peters, where he went to ten, ten college, majoring in criminal justice. And whereas Douglas, one with St. Peters, one with the St. Peters DeCox, celebrated his star NCAA twenty-one, making March man his history, becoming the first number fifteen seed to play in the Elite Eight. And whereas the historic Cinderella Brown from the NCAA tournament, the Elite Eight, named Nutley residents in the world, run of excitement and memories, never to be forgotten, putting St. Peters on the map, making Dougie Buckets and Dirty Doug a national icon. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Mayor and Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, and State of New Jersey, that the Township honor and congratulate Douglas Ryan Eater on his amazing accomplishments and great success. It is resolved and out with this proclamation, in the sentence of Douglas. Congratulations.
Sorry, yeah.
Congratulations, great rock on that, that's. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time to go.
Doug, like I said, a few words up that high post there.
First of all, I want to say, I recognize that, that you're short, really. I'd say, I want to thank you for being here, but everything began in Nutley. I've been messing my whole life here, on those more days, you know, it's all a combination, it's basically a game. And that's how I felt a little bit, and I was so fortunate to be in this situation, I was just in, uh, two months ago. Uh, it's very challenging, and everything I was hoping to say and stuff, I mean, that's what means. But I wasn't doing it alone, I had the whole hometown, I was behind me, cheering me on, and everyone that respected somebody from Nutley. If I raised my heart, I mean, I could go out there, play harder, help me in the park. Um, I feel like I helped during the lockdown together in Nutley, a lot of words I'm able to, so the town taught me, so awesome. Uh, so just, uh, maybe looking back, considering myself as a little kid playing in the street, uh, the grand race, where I'd open my ball outside, every day, at school and stuff, and then, uh, to be able to get back to the town, I have the whole town, like, out of the supporting the earnings, the earnings, so true to me, so I feel better, but.
This time, we have a couple of special presentations, so I'll turn it over to the Nutley Rotary.
Thank you, Mayor, for your lovely congratulations. I mean, a lot of something about the Rotary, I had one review, she goes on that, this year, about leaders, that were developed. But tonight, I would just want to thank all of you for having the opportunity to speak. Um, Nutley Rotary, we've enjoyed it very rich this very year, in our group, uh, we are, our one hundred fifth year anniversary this year, in Nutley, and, uh, a lot has to be said for the collaboration and the value that we have, that we do. Because of that work of helping us coordinate and street code, because of elements used, uh, we want to be able to accomplish things that we do for a hundred. So thank you very much for that. Um, tonight, we have a special recognition, specifically for our members of Nutley. And I'm going to try to go to our Vice President, Town Topco, for those of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Scott Kelly, and distinguished Commissioners, and the Honorable Judge, come here on behalf of the Nutley Rotary Club. Uh, it was brought to my attention last year, that the Rotary picks out a hero for EMS, police, or fire. Last year, we honored Mike Barrett from the Rescue Squad. And tonight, I'm going to honor two officers, Officer Steven Rice, Rice, and Officer Pasani. Both those were, I have to say, hard to get through acceptance. They both in white, and I voted to be white and be humble. We're doing this because the people in this town need to know what the police officers in this town do for us. They risk their life, which these two officers did, and I'd say earlier. So at this time, it is my pleasure and honor to present them both with the police officer of the Europort on behalf of the Nutley Rotary and District Seventy-Four Southern Club. Oh, obviously, the boss. Oh, thank you, Father. Uh, Officer Rice, Officer Pasani, was a few words. True words.
Maybe the president's back there, so I'm probably asking lawyer on speed dial right now. Um, Mr. Monaco was correct, uh, we also, Pasani talked a couple of days, we talked to him, I said, we want. I told Mr. Monaco, I was saying, yeah, we just want to kill them all. I mean, I've worked with a great group of police officers, and every single day, they risk their lives, to protect the streets of Nutley, and those are our citizens that are superior. Uh, so I pulled him up, I'm like, yeah, we want, we're not showing up. And exactly like he said, he told me to shut up, be humble, dress up, and accept this award. Uh, because, and something really profound, he said, it wasn't just about who were the crimes, it was about every single police officer that wears a shirt of police. He said that our citizens need to know what our police officers did. The mayor made mention, the new mayor made mention, for the last two years, police officers showed up when others were ready to stay at the for a lot of the last two years, we showed up and had protests in our town. So when we hear that, you know, we do anything. On hold, he said, the new officer, Pasani, did something, we jumped into the sand river. We sacked that several police officers, any officers sitting in the back, did something, hurt an item in the town. There was a police officer in the back of this room that grabbed a vehicle, a DPDW truck, and because the trucks are bigger than our police vehicles, saved somebody's life, because DPDW was there. Our EMS team was out there, our Ford is all ship, our day ship, our midnight ship, they were all out there rescuing people. There were citizens clinging to trees in the parks, but our police officers were out there. We do do something. So I hope they receive this award, I thank for, and I just wanted to remind them why, when a father, a mother, a brother, a sister, puts somebody in the war, and holds it as a weapon, we do do something. We stand ready for jumping over that burning building, we stand ready for jumping to the sand river, we stand ready to run in for school if there's an active shooter. And every man and woman of the other police department, as my brother, his sister, my uncle, my uncle, my wife, not for a fellow officer, but for some other citizen that we don't even know in this township, we do do something. And I thank Mr. Monaco and the Rotary Club for thanking us, and allowing us to receive this award. Thank you, Mr. Monaco.
Pasani.
What's that word? I just wondered, you know, where everything has been said, please, the world was, it's not just about us, I don't want to put it, it's just that we work with. It's, I just want to say, thank you to everyone that came out and see this, I think, the speech panel is, we're going to work today. I love her, thank you.
Bishop, Bishop, Patraco, and some of the other officers. I would just like to thank the J C's for wrecking up the posture. Definitely already thanked him, Dan, that's my job, but, you know, I'm sure what Steve said, you know, all around town, a lot of times, you're all complaining about our mistake about this, beating decade, we never really hear something nice. Truthfully, people don't realize. Truthfully, people don't realize, you know, what a great police department we really have and what they do, and how they went to the house and were coping and all that. And I have to tell you, I said, "West, if I'm not here." I grew up by the Saint River. Saint River was like taboo, no bias kids, with the carrots, the bush, and all that stuff. And I'd like to thank all the management. I don't know if I can jump in that river, but I'm on my tail. So I actually really want to thank you guys and our police department. Because you never know if you're going to run into nothing. Whenever you confront something or anything, you gotta just step up. I'd like to thank all of yous. And I would also like to recognize Commissioner Steve Rogers this year to make some work. Great job from your son, Steve. You led with honor your whole career. And Chris Pasani, mother, father, here too. You just didn't go in there and like, you know, upset my boundaries. But yeah, back there, you know what, just kidding, put us on the map. I think you deserve to stand for a reason as well. I'm going to stand up in class.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kelly. Well, I have a few words to say. Congratulations again to Doug Eater. I was beating my pride every time I saw his Facebook up on the screen of Times for Casting. Felt like that just isn't how, that was a problem. And it was, it was a big moment. I've seen a lot in the March Madness, and it was, it was something I never felt before. Thank you for that. I definitely made the town very proud. I want to congratulate the officers. And I think, I think it's important to note that you guys don't get paid for what you do. You get paid for what you're willing to do. And you're willing to jump into a dangerous situation. Put your lives on the line to save another person. That's something incredible. So congratulations and thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Officer Rogers, Officer Pasani. This is kind of like deja vu, all right? You guys did such tremendous work that day, all right? Rescuing those people. They stand ever show above many walls, many craters, many departments. We were done, but throughout the state, we turned. So I just want to congratulate you for your courage, all right? That for acting without thinking of yourselves. Doug Eater, what can I say? I have an already big statement, and I know how to spell your name. It's E D E R T. And I heard it on TV, and I smile every time I see you. So congratulations to you, the Nuthy Rotary.
Quite good as it said already. Doug, I want to congratulate you as well. I also want you to know that my personal respect, my bestest apologies. From the bench. One power to me, to Mr. Torey Kelly, as you were the judge. John, that you always worry that you recognize that I will get it to my gratitude for you. For your leadership, for your courage, for your professionalism. But I also agree with you as well that you stand tall among very tall officers. We're very fortunate in Nutley to have police staff that on any given day, any one of them could stand up and find themselves in the situation you were in and have the respect that they do the same thing. So I appreciate your recognition of your fellow colleagues and officers. I applaud our police department for what they do. Doug, congratulations to your son, Steve. Congratulations to your son.
Congratulations, John. You did a great job jumping in that river. As Commissioner Torey said, just jumping in the river is courage enough. Helping save somebody beyond the cold too. So congratulations, Doug. Come on up here, take a picture.
Congratulations.
There he is. One more.
Are we going to take a five minute break? Glad you guys to clear out unless you want to stay.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Let's come back and we're ready. That's part finished.
We have a second session minutes from April 18, 2022, and May 3, 2022. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Bishop Turek.
Aye.
Bishop Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Torey Kelly.
Aye. Communications and correspondents on birthday.
Thank you, Mayor. We got two this evening. The first one is the Nuthy Education Foundation has submitted a social fair program to hold at the fundraiser June 15, 2022, for the reading date of June 16, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. At Kingsland Manor located 3 Kingsland Road. And the second one is Concord Brothers Management, trading as the Old Cowman, has submitted an application for extension of premises for their event to be held on Saturday for 2022, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. At their location on 2 East and St. Avenue. Any motion? Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Turek.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Torey Kelly.
Aye. Let's move to reports. Commissioner Torey Kelly. Yes, I have my problems. Thank you, Commissioner. Bill Tannenbaum.
Thank you, Mayor. Realist for May 17, 2022. Affairs, $9,7539.90%. Revenue and finance, $2,774,695.50%. O S D, $62,268.63%. Lit works, $66,832.35%. Personal property, $148,183.50%. Water utility, $19,479.90$. Payroll as of February, May 13, 2022. Regular payroll total, $842,954.48$. Overtime payroll, $37,660.92$. Total payroll, $888,615.40$. Rem total, $441,460.75$.
Move to bills. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Turek.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Torey Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
From Canada, agenda of his only member.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons who listen to Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the line of order providing their name and address to the record. Unless written time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their hours to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer assistance comments to the appropriate members of the Board.
We will, we will say again. Congratulations, next one. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I just have one comment on the agenda under the binder on page three. And the next theme will be a five words, cause of primary. Is there a reason that would have been announced publicly rather than this agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. It has been advertised from Nuthy Sun and the Herald News, April 28. It's old newspapers, and it's also on the website.
Yes, I understand that. I just wanted to go right to the quote that was clearly asked. I remember it's had right to four, so I would have missed it before that. And it did a perfect amount to fit it all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's move on to commissioner announcements. Commissioner Rogers.
I think it's if you're going to.
Commissioner. Yes, thank you, Mayor. This Friday, we are doing two things. One, it's our annual relief for life event. So I invite everybody to come out, donate as much as you can. So we can all try to fight against cancer. And we are also dedicating a new park that's like part of the park. Right close to the town hall and chest in the chest of shape. Edrins, it's called a place of hope. So that new park, it's going to be a wonderful ceremony. It's a place that we feel, uh, for people to visit, to remember, to reflect, think about our bubble. I would go with the worst, uh, for the COVID. But I'd go with the best, the worst. So I would, I would everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Torey. Yes, Mayor, this Wednesday night coming up, we had already the mass party. I'm sure these five, the radio people will be there. And we, there's going to be a food truck there as well. So we invite all residents to come. We hope you're a public people, especially. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, Wednesday, we have a rescheduled long intensity screening from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. On Tuesday, May 24th, we have a stroke assessment clinic at the health department, staying 12:00 p.m. And Wednesday, January 1st, we have a blood drive and then we have a end of tunnel from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Heart Start Building. And on June 4th, we have a blood screening, planning the timing of this return. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a number of witnesses, documents, or second readings. So let's move to resolution. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one on tonight, and this is for Asian American Pacific Islander heritage month. Whereas approximately 16.6 million Asian American Pacific Islanders reside in the U.S. Approximately 5.4% of the United States population. And by 2050, Asian American Pacific Islanders are about 9.7% of the total United States population. Over 40 million people. And whereas Asian American Pacific Islanders represent over 30 countries and ethnic groups that speak overall hundred different languages. Whereas the month of May has been selected to commemorate the arrival of the first known Japanese immigrant to the U.S. on May 7, 1843. The most honored completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869. Was upwards of 20,000 Chinese workers up to construct. The month pays tribute to the generations of Asian Pacific Islanders that have enriched the United States history and are instrumental in its success. Whereas the origin of Asian American Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month would be traced back to 95th Congress in 1977 to 1978, with five joint resolutions for instance, those that are legally designated to commemorate accomplishments of Asian American Pacific Islanders. Whereas on March 18, 1979, President Jimmy Carter issued Proclamation 4650, first presidential proclamation for Asian Pacific American heritage. In this proclamation, credit President Carter for the significant role Asian Pacific Americans have played in the creation of dynamic and forested, pluralistic American society with the contributions to science, arts, and to government of Congress. Whereas on May 7, 1999, President George H.W. Bush issued Presidential Proclamation 6130 visiting May, May 1999, as the first Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas AAPI Heritage Month, formerly Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, until 2009, originally in 1992, but then in New York, I am Frank Gordon, which is still called the month. That calls it the month of May, received that designation, which came from the idea of former Capitol Hill staffer, Ji Ju, in mid-1997, or 15 years earlier. Rested in the commission of compilation of eight crime data files by the Senator. The study of eight inch units revealed that antique Asian eight crime arrests by 339% as compared to a year before. With New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, other cities, other cities, you guys can write your numbers in 2020. Therefore, he resolved the fourth commission to tax the money, and it has the state of the jury recognized May as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The bench and leaders through collaboration encouraged all residents to come together, union solidarity, and trace the suffering riches of the Asian American Pacific Islander communities. So move, second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Turek.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Torey Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the officials, if we saw a joint official with the National Company, candidate that's chasing their treasure, they still have a price. Revival of the savings and task cards, the amount of 1,060,000 dollars sets for blind at 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Turek.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Torey Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Torey, whereas the cash flow level was declared by pretty much state of emergency. I'm just talking about one fact that is true. The actual name is Tropo de la Vida, which hit the township of Nellie on September 1st, 2001. Granted, initially, it was 455, Tropo de la Vida, while we did a township of Rieden. Great, so the Jersey, and Echolime, Coneline, E350 box truck was destroyed. Whereas personal repair insurance company has been the box truck as a whole. 1994, Coneline, cover rate, E350 box truck. For that was 608.3 cents. Whereas for that was 608.3 cents to be paid by personal repair to the township of Nellie. Therefore, be resolved by Board of Commissioners. County office, state, and district authority authorized this township clerk to release the box truck as a result of insurance claim to personal repair insurance company for the matter of this vehicle. Be affirmed to resolve by personal repair insurance company located in. Here my pen, I'm a common town in Jersey. We'll be taking it up to a call out of triad place of the Jersey. And congratulations. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Bishop Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye.
This resolution, number 44-22, to the states and territories of the first alert as well. There's no way that's fair. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Bishop Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye.
Whereas the first council of the national alcoholism and drug abuse established municipal lines for the rental of alcoholism and drug abuse in 1989 to educate and teach residents. Local government and law enforcement officials, schools, non-profit organizations, state community, parents, youth, and other allies in efforts to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse in communities represented in Jersey. In coordination with GCAEA and the Jersey Department of Human Services Division on Mental Health and Addiction Services, as a board of leadership, ran into the GCAEA in this whole lines program. Whereas the Board of Commissioners and the township of Nellie County Office recognizes that the use of drugs is a serious problem in society amongst persons globally abused and therefore has established in this whole lines program. And whereas the Board of Commissioners firmly recognize that it's incumbent upon not only public officials, but on the entire community to take action to prevent such abuse in our community. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has applied for the BMHAS grant leadership funding. The government council on alcoholism and drug abuse throughout county tests now there were be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, township of Nellie County Office. Statement here by recognizing Board Commissioners does hereby require submission of application for BMHAS grant funds for municipal lines for the year. One grant term, 7122 to 31423, in the amount of $5,500,500, clear for sense. Board of Commissioners, knowledge is in terms of addition. Administration of municipal lines grant could be an administrative appliance for order requirements. I move forward. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye. Third, unemployment orders and taxes there can be 22% in New Jersey's home vehicle fatalities in 2019. Whereas the most recent statewide survey undertaken in June 2020 turned that the seatbelt usage rate in New Jersey to be 9.35% of or as used to seatbelt are made the most effective way of avoiding death or serious injury to motor vehicle crash. Whereas in 2019, New Jersey's car accident, nearly 3,500 crashes were not committed with not his or her seatbelt, resulting in 132 fatal. Whereas the state of New Jersey will participate in nationwide clicking or taking seatbelt mobilization from May 23rd to June 5, 2022, in order to raise awareness and increase seatbelt usage through combination of high visibility, enforcement, and public attention. Whereas a further increasing of seatbelt usage in New Jersey will save lives, honor road. Now therefore be resolved by Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nellie. County office, state of New Jersey, could hereby proclaim and announce May 23rd, June 5, 2022, as quicker taking of rotation in Jersey. And her own citizens always aware of seatbelts when driving or riding on our roads. I move forward. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Bishop Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Bishop Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by Board of Commissioners, Nellie County Office, state of New Jersey, that the treasurers hereby provide to refund payments for recreation programs in the amount listed above. Home to 97, will be added for sharing program of $30 for the 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Bishop Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye.
To a head, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas random applications have been received by the following organization. Nellie Family Services Bureau, license number 32-22, on purpose 5050 cash wrapper. License number 3322, on purpose merchandise rack, L Tuesday, June 4, 2022. St. Mary's, Rogue Cat Church, license number 3122. Calendar wrap every first Saturday of each month, 9/3/22 through 8/5/2023. Whereas the application sent to the community and approved by the municipal court and the police department, currently presumed by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nellie County Office of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved. The municipal court authorized to issue said license. It's move for resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye.
Whereas public work services provided by Township of Nellie or its group partner, Citizens of New Jersey, whereas the support of an understanding and local citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public assistance programs such as support of streets, highways, and various services of cycle collection. Whereas this year's state ready resilience, true job work employees, are always ready to serve the communities in resilient, has ever in their place to pick themselves up and have the challenge to create foundations of strong work. Now therefore resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nellie County Office of New Jersey, theater by the week of May 15, May 20, or 2022, whereas national public works being attached to the property, all citizens and civic organizations to equip themselves with the issues of providing public works to recognize contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, and better life. Move for resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Bishop Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye.
This resolution, we have Board of Commissioners, whereas Township of Nellie entered to a professional services contract, resolution number 94, which is related with the MRT as a specialized professional developer for development projects. Whereas the record of events has been followed, change order contract, change order number 1, professional services, $2,000. Responsible of this purpose for the economic development account, 20122625. The specific development needs to provide cheap nature. So the match will open for 444, NJSA 48, 44-7, NJAC, 504-2. Now therefore resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Nellie County Office of New Jersey, the change order number 1, 2020, being adhered by the. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye.
So that could produce this portion, but we will move on to our comment.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding immunity concerns should approach the line of honor provided their name and address to record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their access to five minutes. All remarks, comments must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may process comments to your appropriate member of the Board.
For a more final amendment to say, Captain. Mayor Scott Feller. Are you thinking back to the, the administration? Like they'll have the last two years before the next election. Several times are likely to address this issue. I think this solution is. All the number of the state of New Jersey Board of Elections force, just to confirm the process. That if a citizen has a complaint without any verbal objection, the first process to apply to the court, right, will not leave this or quote all this. At that time, it has to be addressed. Recently, Frank the Mayo, who is now a permanent member, I have applied with the sign of proper. Mr. Moore, I will talk to the township employees. No, no, this, he, the couple of the rice kind employees have the one beneficial. It's very clear from Rice, not Rice notice.
Bruno.
If there are specific concerns in the matter, you're always welcome to bring it to my attention. At this point, I'm not sure what it is that you're going to allege, that this is the kind of forum that's not really.
I was, I'll be, I'm expecting a really good one. When you try to point that out in the last complaint, it's never addressed. Like to know, please, do you have any intentions to actually force to that anybody who files, who would be addressing Mr. Moore?
Again, I'm going to defer to Mr. Bruno on this.
The township always, sorry. Township will always, you know, deal with these matters appropriately, forth the appropriate cause, make sure that the proper.
So based on our conversation, I do have that, you know, we had a conversation prior to this. I'm sure we will, legally speaking. I'm going to file the two complaints, depending on the address. Is there two hundred and forty? Please, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore, if I can just, please, if you have a complaint, you know, and you want to make a complaint, it can be dealt with and addressed. This is not the time to be talking about people, you know, commissioners. This is not a forum for. I have a complaint, we can deal with them.
We have to next. Second. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else want to probably like to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing done, we need the executive time.
Yes, sir.
So again, motion, going directly to the spouse.
Contract negotiations, litigation, and attorney-client privilege matters.
Moving ahead. Second.
Whereas sectioning of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter 231, 1975, permits the splitting of the public meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. Whereas the Board of Commissioners is tasked not leaking county events, as is getting during the desire to proceed to close executive session. Now therefore be resolved by Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nellie, who went to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations, litigation, and attorney-client privilege matters. Be for the result that the time of such discussion may be exposed to the public, shall be when as such exposure may be made adversely affecting the Township of Nellie pending and or anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exception provided by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Feller.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Yes, Commissioner Tucci, Mayor Scott Feller.
Did I say? That's what I meant. Yes.
Well, so that concludes the business portion. I do want no further action. I have a motion to adjourn. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petrago.
Aye.
Bishop Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Feller.
Aye.
Time to say goodnight.
Good night. In our next meeting, we get it on the record. It's, when, Madam Porter?
Our next meeting is June 7. I'm sorry. Yes, June 7 at 5:30.
Thank you, Madam Porter. Night, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for your quiet words.